All right, I'm going to call the Board to the August 11th regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment as indicated in Agenda Item 11. If you would like to speak at public comment, please fill out one of the comment cards that are right outside the door where you came in, and they will be picked up right around the superintendent's report. All right, at this time, would you please stand in your as Kelly Formo visits us in the federal allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back, everybody. Happy August, you know, a week or so before school starts. I came into the building the other day and you could just feel an energy difference between this week and like two weeks prior. Like, stuff is going on, everybody's getting ready, it's very exciting. First up, we have a couple of recognitions, which are always lovely and fun to do. So first up, we are going to have the athletic director, Robert Hall, and the head coach, Ian Hearn, from Forest Hills Eastern come up to recognize the 2025 MHSAA state championship baseball team.
I'm honored to be here today, Board. Obviously, an incredible season for our baseball team. It's my first year here, it was a great experience to be a part of and whatnot, and I attribute a lot of that. And I'm sure, I'm sure he'll say the same about our new complex. Came in handy during the season. We were able to host the district tournament and another later playoff round on our home turf field, which was incredible. Had nearly sellout crowds all the way around our facility, just a fun atmosphere to be a part of. Hardest working coaching staff I've been around. He's put together quite the staff of volunteers that puts in countless hours of effort and energy in the off-season. And they all do it out of the goodness of their hearts, too. Like, just an incredible staff, great kids, great culture all around. And Coach Hearn's done a phenomenal job with our culture at Forest Hills Eastern and everything. Our kids, today's the first day of fall sports, and at Forest Hills Eastern, a lot of our kids are multi-sport athletes. And so we've got soccer going on right now, football is at six, well, at six o'clock, so they're going as well right now. So a lot of our baseball kids are currently at practices. But I'll turn it over to Coach Hearn for his words.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. How do I dress this? What way do I face? All right, well, thank you, it's very nice to be recognized, it's awesome to be recognized at Forest Hills Eastern in the baseball program. At the same time, and also part of Forest Hills Public Schools, to be recognized through Eastern and Eastern baseball. So thank you very much for that. And yes, it is summer, and I will, I'll be the first to tell you, with the 2025 baseball team, they don't miss anything. This is kind of anomaly here that they're not here, and not all of them are here, and like, almost all of them are gone because of other arrangements. And we'd rather have them working on their teams and so forth like that, who are prepping for college. But again, thank you, thank you for the recognition. It was absolutely amazing year, that's for sure. And Robert already touched on the new facility, and the new facility is absolutely game changer. There's a buzz in the entire state talking about it. We're not the only ones that have a turf field, there's other turf fields, but Forest Hills kind of elevated the game a little bit. A lot of people want to take a look at our facility. Everybody under the sun is contacting, wishing that they can get on it, and of course, we're not letting them. So, but it elevated everything, the excitement around it. There's been excitement around Eastern baseball for quite some time, and it just elevated it even more so. So the facility is second to none, and this is the way Forest Hills Public Schools is, they're second to none. During the tournament time, there's this massive turnout. And one thing that stood out to the coaches and the players is the whole, it seemed like the whole community was there during the state semifinals and the state finals, and they were all suited up. Everybody's wearing Forest Hills or Eastern baseball shirts or Eastern throughout the stands, just everywhere, and it was absolutely amazing. So it was home away from home, it was home away from home. And I do feel like we had the best and loudest representation out of all the teams that were there. And during the time, during when you make a tournament run, and it doesn't matter, like, the same thing in 2022 when Forest Hills Eastern, we won it in 2022. You have peaks and valleys during the tournament, and what gets you through is, obviously, you have to have good quality baseball players, and committed ones on top of that. But what gets you through is their bond and their servant mentality to one another. And that's another thing that the program and the school instills into, you know, our student athletes, is their servant from one another. And it's easy to be envious of one another, especially if somebody started in front of you. But they celebrate each other and cheer each other on. I think that's a big difference between our Forest Hills athletes, student athletes, compared to other athletes that are around throughout the state. Because sometimes envy gets in the way and, you know, create those really strong bonds. So when that happens, it's tough to win ballgames or big ballgames in situations. For example, the East Grand Rapids game that we had really early on in the district run where we almost, we didn't almost get beat, we knew we were going to win, but it was a close game. It was a close game, and it took that kind of, that kind of bond, you know, to get through it. And it also takes that kind of bond, too, because when you're facing, for example, Orchard Lake St. Mary's, which is a boarding school, and they have kids from out of the country, kids from out of our state, kids from in our state that participate there. That's, you know, that's a challenging school, it's a challenging school to beat. But, you know, the hard work, hard work beats talent, but the chemistry, the chemistry that comes forward and that type of mindset is what wins ballgames for us and what, you know, creates that type of atmosphere. So I'm all, I'm super proud of all the athletes and being part of the school and also being part of Forest Hills Public Schools. This year, the team won everything, everything you could possibly win. And in 2022, they, very similar, but this team did just a, they did a little bit more, did a little bit more. And what I mean by that, this year, it was their fifth year in a row they won the conference title. And it's a very challenging and competitive conference. You have programs in there that won state titles in baseball, you know, three or four different schools in our conference. And then also, we switch conferences, and some of the other schools from previous conferences have won, too. But 25 in a row is pretty impressive. They're district champions, regional champions, quarterfinal champions, semifinal champions, and state champions. They're academic state champions as a team, and they're national academic champions. So that's the part that they took it a little bit further than the 2022 team. The other part they took a little bit further is they were the number one team in the state of Michigan out of all divisions, Division 1, 2, 3, and 4. Their final record was 42-1, and they won 41 games in a row. And as far as we can see, there's no let up for, you know, the years to come. So that's truly exciting, and it's super exciting being a part of it and being one of the coaches, and also being a teacher in such a great community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if one of the athletes aren't here, do you want to introduce the ones that are here and have them come up?
Yeah, for sure. First one, Nathan Zirkey. Nathan is the voice of the Hawks. So when you come to a ballgame and you're listening to the music, and you're listening to it being announced in some of the organization, this is a guy, he took it and ran with it and made it extremely good, and he's phenomenal at it. So during the spring, he's not available, but outside of the spring, I mean, he's phenomenal, so thank you. Cam Palo. Cam is a super big arm, he just committed to Michigan State. He was in the state semifinals, he pitched against Orchard Lake St. Mary's, and he was throwing 92 miles an hour. So, yeah, he throws hard.
All right, and then we, actually, we have one last thing for Mr. Robert Hall, if he wants to come back up, because we also have the Michigan High School Baseball Coaches Association, Division II Coach of the Year Award. Goes to...
Goes to, obviously, Mr. Ian Hearn. Need I say anymore? I think he touched on everything as to why he is the State Coach of the Year, so you're a coach.
And I think Coach Hearn, I messed that up a little bit, I gave you your certificate a little bit early. All right, well, thank you, everybody. Congratulations to the Forest Hills Eastern baseball team, they make all of Forest Hills very proud, congratulations. We're going to move on to the business portion, do not feel like you have to stay. I understand that this is not probably how you want to spend the rest of your evening, so feel free to leave if you like. But if you want to stay, you absolutely may, but just don't feel like you need to. All right, we are going to move on to our consent grouping. Can I have a motion to please approve the consent grouping items for A1 through D1?
Motion.
Second. Okay, great, and can we have our curriculum report, please, Mrs. Tryon?
Yes, so we had a pretty lengthy presentation about the Forest Hills Northern Middle School construction project, and that was fantastic. I don't know, Dr. Mishad, if you're going to cover much of that in your report for finance? Okay, then I will just, we had that presentation, it was amazing. And then, in terms of the actual curriculum portion of the meeting, we did hear from Kim Van Antwerp and one of our school nurses about the Kids Have Rights curriculum that the district is seeking approval for. This curriculum has, I would say, sort of been in use already for many, many years in the district. In fact, it's kind of like jagged memory, and I found, this is my son's folder of it, I think, two years ago. And I know my daughter did it as well, so it's been around for quite a while. But the district is seeking to officially adopt it and then be able to do it with much more fidelity and have access to the full program versus the bits and pieces that we've been using up until this point. It's a curriculum that aims to provide body safety education to our kindergarten through fourth grade students. It is evidence-based and includes best practices in prevention of abuse. So there are four main goals of this curriculum, so body safety rights, identification of safe adults, safe touch, and when and how to get help from a safe adult. It aligns with Michigan health standards, and the district is looking to have us do a body data review in order to adapt the program in its entirety, like I just said a minute ago. Currently, this program partners with 18 other public school districts in Kent County, along with some private and charter schools. It, like all of our programs, parents have the option to act out of it if they want to. The counselors have already been doing this, like I said, for many, many years, so a lot of this will not even be reviewed. And we are going to do a 30-day review on this and vote on this in our September meeting. And then lastly, the 30-day review for our everyday math materials that actually started in June, but then we broke for July, that is up now. And so this is a digital subscription to support students' day-to-day math instruction for our first through fifth grade students. And this will support 160 different classrooms, and we are receiving a discount for a three-year purchase of this subscription. And again, this is not new, we've been using Everyday Math for many years now. And then, just kind of some highlights, on July 16th, there was the Pages and Popsicles event, and the district gave out 500 books to our youngest students, and that was very well attended. So that was a fantastic event that I'm sure will be repeated in the coming years. And, yeah, I think I've got my story now.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Tryon? Okay, we will go on now to Mrs. Nigmeier with finance.
Yep, thank you. First, we had the thorough bond construction update, which was a present, which included a presentation from Chris at GMB, who is our designer. He highlighted the design plan for Northern Hills Middle School, and it is quite impressive, the process that takes place before this point. They start with a vision of the project to really get that all-encompassing vision to define what they're going to do. They meet with many different stakeholders within the building and with admin, teachers, to really define what that vision should be and what they want for that end goal. The vision for this project is to transform the building into a space that reflects and elevates northern middle high culture. And then next, they identified a couple of goals, five goals that kind of led that design. First, being celebrating outdoors, having more accessible and purposeful outdoor spaces, having calm and comforting transitions, how to bring in calmness to going between classes so that there aren't a bunch of minutes spent in the beginning of class to kind of calm people down after that transition. And that includes different colors and easier wayfinding. Cohesive environment, not having these separate spokes down to each hallway, but really to have that inclusive feel for the entire environment. Having a welcome and open entry, really brighter, safer spaces, more viewpoints. And then seamless collaboration, so more spaces to collaborate without having to move far within the building. So those are kind of the five leading goals that they had for this design. And I thought it was interesting, he said this space has really been Frankenstein'd over the years to meet the needs at that time. So this project was really all-encompassing, to really think about redesigning the whole space for what they, for what their vision was. And they also built inflexibility for future needs, thinking not knowing what the future will bring by having that flexibility. So we expect this project to come in right around budget. In September, the design pieces will go up to bid, and we should expect this to be on our agenda in November for board approval. It will be a seven-phase construction project, starting hopefully next April and ending around September 2028. Many more construction updates were given, they can be viewed on our website, so that presentation is on our website for everybody to view on August 4th. But a few highlights, Pine Ridge should be just about complete, maybe, right? Close. We're working to schedule an open house so that families and community members can see that renovated space. The elementary playgrounds are also wrapping up, and some final updates, I think, at Northern Trail should be done in September, but the rest of them should be wrapping up here shortly, some flood students soon. We'll have a presentation on the Aquatic Center in September, and approval should come to the Board in about November. We're also planning to hold an open house to show the community members the vision of this project, but date and time TBD. Finally, there are a few projects that will come to us for approval in December and January, including the athletic, some athletic projects for all vehicles and data elementary learning space design. In the summer of 2026, there will be eight-plus projects in active construction phases, so the team will be very busy managing those. All right, that was the construction update. Next, we have a budget update, which really hasn't changed because nothing has changed at the government level. So we still have no action from the state of finalizing our budget, but the next meeting is August 12th, so hopefully we'll have some movement there. But therefore, assumptions remain the same. As a reminder, the current budget has us eating into our fund balance by 8.4 million, and we expect to end the year with a 10.77 fund balance, those two expenses. Next, the 2024-2025 school year financials are being completed about now for the audit, and our auditors will be on site next week, so that will be fun. And for business items that are on our agenda. So first, we plan to spend $160,000 out of the general fund for paper for the 2025-2026 school year through our REMC co-op, which allows us to enjoy competitive pricing while complying with state purchasing laws. We plan to, second, we plan to spend, spend in Mount Nap to exceed $40,151 out of the 2023 capital projects for media center shelving at Pine Ridge, that's part of their construction project that's running up. And we went through our Omni co-op for that bidding process. Third, we plan to spend an amount not to exceed $350,000 from the general fund for diesel fuel for the 25-26 school year. This is something we approve every August. The pricing will be determined on the day of purchase, and we have five different vendors that we ask for pricing, and we go with the lowest on the day of pricing. For reference, in 2024-2025, we spent $263,000, the year before that, $307,000, and the year before that, $405,000. So 350 is roughly in the middle, and we are being a little conservative due to the volatility we continue to see in the energy market. Finally, we have $81,646 in consents to reimburse Kent County for property taxes, which is based on reassessment of property values. Fine, the last thing for our business is from the curriculum update, we plan to spend an amount not to exceed $178,200 out of the general fund for that three-year subscription for Everyday Math. And that is all I have, any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there any discussion or questions, sending up consent agenda? All right, can we do a roll call vote then, please?
Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Mr. Kamod?
Yes.
Mr. DeBord?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Boston?
Yes.
Mrs. Nigmeier?
Thank you very much, all right. Next, can I have a motion to approve Board policies as presented in the Board Book?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion about this one?
Yes. On Board policies, wait a second, I'll pull up my notes here. In 5407, as far as the Mahmood versus Taylor, and I had been talking about this all week, but different people, but I just feel that because of the language in this policy does not clearly state that we would accept all religious objections. I think by lumping the religious and non-religious objections together, it fails to explicitly protect constitutionally guaranteed religious rights in the Mahmood versus Taylor decision. And I believe that the policy needed clear, a little bit clearer separate recognition on the religious objections to avoid legal inupholding parental rights. And what I mean by that is on this, it states the first level, like the parent submitting an objection, explanation, writing, and then the building principal will review the parent's objection. And then the objective materials to determine whether, and then it skips all down, it goes to A, B, C, and D. And yes, the materials required for the student to engage in contact or practice that violates or substantially interferes with the student's sincerely held religious belief or religious development. And then it goes into C and D. However, it does end with the building principal will confer with the teacher as part of the review of the parent's objection, and the building principal will provide all parties with a written response granting or denying the parent's objection. So I just feel like the language is just showing that you can approve or deny, and I feel like that needed to be tightened a little bit. And I did send an email out this week in regards to it, and I know this is being presented to us, so I'm just saying this. My objection is that I don't think it's clearly defined, that we cannot, we cannot deny religious beliefs under the Mahmood versus Taylor that came down from the Supreme Court. So I'm just kind of making a statement about where I'm at with that, so.
All right, thank you for clearly saying, I understand. Does anybody else have anything they want to say regarding Board policies?
And then I do have one more, sorry, okay.
One more.
On that, I just wanted to kind of clearly define, I know we talked about the other one. There was a lot of language that was removed in how we remove curriculum or the process and that. And I know that I was understanding that if there was, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, because we had a good discussion about it, but I just wanted to, you know, verify or just make sure that we're, and I'm hearing this correctly, that if we did have enough objections in a classroom, that we would actually consider either removing that material or the curriculum as a whole. Am I hearing that correctly?
What I think is fair to say is if we recognize that there are enough families within the community that object to a particular material that's within the curriculum, and that would give us pause as to whether or not we're meeting the needs of the community and our children, and then at that point, we, from the curriculum side, would definitely look at whether there needs to be a change. Yes, your work.
Okay, does anybody else have anything regarding Board policy?
Well, I just want to say from that, one you pulled out first, I guess I read it, I read it as those three, A, B, C, is they would have to meet one of those standards, and that's when the principal and the teacher would evaluate if it did meet one of those standards, whether to approve or deny. So I guess that's how I read it, so that it would, I don't think that a teacher or a principal would go against those religious if it really didn't meet that, so I guess that's, I was comfortable with it.
Right, and I, and I understand that, I just think, I just felt like there was an amendment that I actually passed along in an email that I thought would tighten it up a little bit more to say that we could not deny a religious objection on that and stuff. I just think that the last statement leaves it open whether you can approve or deny it, so that's, that was my only, my own thought. And I did go down the channel of seeing if we could amend it possibly, or, you know, offered a suggestion to it. Just to, I just wanted to tighten up a little bit, so it was, there was no question on. Because I read it one way, you read it another way, which means that the public might see it a little bit differently as well, too, so.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor it, but there are, like you're referencing, there are four reasons why somebody would act out religiousism. One of those is B, and that is with the Mahmood case, Mahmood case clearly defined. So when we move forward with creating our forums, administrative guidelines, and our training with our people, they would recognize what the constitutional rights are of these particular requests. We have no interest in, you know, turning down any viable religious conflict that a family might have. And we'll continue to work with families like we have with all those right cases, so, thank you.
And I would just, the thought that's in mind, because I understand your thought, too, and it makes sense to me. I also think, you know, the layers of things that govern us and our behaviors, you know, at a school district level, are the things at the school district level as well. We have all this federal guidance now, and we have this in policy, we have our guiding principles as well. So I would be confident that, right, there's not a principal who's going to disregard religious, you know, belief or objective from a parent and say, no, your child has to sit through this. And I would be surprised if maybe that's ever happened, you know, with objections before. So I would like to think that, I understand that thought, and it could be tighter. Oh, right, I would assume our guiding principles would take over at that level, too, and we would honor those parents' requests if they were.
Right, and then maybe it's just something later that we feel like it needs to be tightened up. I mean, you know, going through that, so, but that was the reason that I wanted to go about. So, thank you for that.
Can we have a roll call vote then, please, on Board policy?
Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. DeBord?
No.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Boston?
Yes.
Mrs. Nigmeier?
All right, up next, can I have a motion to approve the addendum to the superintendent contract effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2023?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, and just to, this was last month, we approved the salary schedules. We didn't have time to get in touch with, with our attorneys over at Trune to get the contract that Ben actually signed with us updated to reflect the numbers that we put in it in June. So that's why it spilled over into, we did the numbers sign last month, and we're actually doing the contract part and putting those numbers into the contract this month. That's why it ended up being two different pieces instead of just one. So the contract itself just updates those numbers and reflects that this is our intention for when it goes to the Office of Retirement Services, when it's time for him to retire, or many, many years from now, that they're, they're long to have any questions. So is there any questions or further discussion on the superintendent contract? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Mr. Kamod?
Yes.
Mr. DeBord?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Boston?
Yes.
Mrs. Nigmeier?
All right, next up, Forest is a student reinstatement consideration. Forest Hills had a student that was had a student that was expelled in December of this past year, uh, their parents petitioned for reinstatement per FHPS Board Policy fifty-two-oh-six-C. In accordance with that policy, we had a reinstatement committee, committee that convened to consider the petition for reinstatement, and that committee is recommending that the board offer a conditional reinstatement. Um, I want to thank Dr. Mishad and Ms. Tryon for being the board representatives on that committee. Um, so can I please have a motion that the Forrest Hills Department of Education conditionally grant reinstatement to student A with the following conditions, that the student has daily check-ins with an FHPS staff number, this check-in requirement will be reevaluated after the first semester, uh, the student does not attend extracurricular activities at the School of Original Expulsion through eighth grade, and this will be subject to reevaluation at the conclusion of eighth grade, uh, and the administration will determine the appropriate attendance area for student A to attend. Yeah, motion, uh, a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, and is there any, are there any questions or follow-up on student reinstatement?
I do, really quick. Um, I just want to clarify busing, and I think we talked about this, that student A is being moved to a school that will not be able to participate in the busing, correct?
That is correct. The administration will make, will be making the placement, but the placement will be out of their attendance area, and the family will be responsible for all transportation costs and their, their own way to get the child to school.
Okay, and then secondly, I know that it says that the attendance is determined by the administration, so can that change at all before the eighth grade reevaluation? Like, can that, I mean, it's kind of an open-ended thing, right?
Yeah, so the idea when, when we talk within, within the committee is to take a look at, um, where the child is, their, their attendance region, what, where we place them will be where they continue through, um, the rest of their high school experience. So, when we're talking about the, um, reevaluation at the end of eighth grade, that was around the extracurricular activities at the school of origin, so the attendance area for that for student A will not change, they will continue in that area in which I placed them. Um, so that will not change all the way through twelfth grade, so what we're looking at is to identify, we put out some timeframes there, so that we take a look at, um, and, and see how that child's doing, but also a little bit impacted by the particular event, have, have they come together and they now, you know, are comfortable with each other, you know, looking at those things, but again, that's about extracurriculars, um, and not the actual attendance area for their education. So, um, at the end of eighth grade, we really take a look to see whether or not there is, um, you know, the comfort level to really allow the student to continue to, uh, attend back at the northern region and some of the extracurriculars and those types of things. Um, so that's what we're talking about when we say that reevaluation at, at eighth grade.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it just seems a little open-ended, like you could, that administration could change their mind without, before the evaluation process, process, you know what I mean? So, I just was curious to see, and will that come, after that, will come back to us again?
No, at this point, what the, what the board's decision is, is to go with the recommendation or deny the recommendation that the committee made, and administratively, we can do the rest of it. And just to be clear, all of the, um, conditions and specifics would be written, written in a letter that would go to the family of the conditionally reinstated student, and also the responsibilities that the family has, and then we would be asking them to sign off on it, and if they aren't able to follow those, then we would make a decision to no longer educate that child.
Anything else on this one? Okay, can we please do a roll call vote then?
Dr. Mishad?
Yes.
Ms. Kamod?
Yes.
Ms. DeBord?
Yes.
Mr. Colley?
Yes.
Ms. Tryon?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Ms. Nyamirea?
Yep. All right, that brings us to informational items. Superintendent Party.
Well, we definitely are a, during a busy time, you can see the, um, the resignations and all the hires that we've had, um, before us, I do have a number of highlights that will have some additional information as well, um, but just one resignation to report, and lots of new faces, uh, within the district, two that got added, uh, just this afternoon at four o'clock.
Wonderful, okay, uh, how about we roll right into the superintendent's report, please?
All right, this seems to be my cadence, right? Just kind of jumping right into that. So, I mentioned the new teacher, so we had about, we had forty people in here today, it was much warmer than it is now, um, and, uh, quickly converted into the, uh, the board meeting room, so tomorrow we will have forty-two, like I said, so, uh, this, this whole week, we have all our new teachers in, uh, in this room, uh, basically in this area, and they're doing a lot of learning and, and growing together. Uh, just wanted to recognize that bus route information will be available on the app this Friday, so the transportation department has been working diligently to get all that information in, um, just recognizing that there's about five thousand students that we, uh, transport, uh, during the school year, and all of that information is correct as of when we get it, so if we have a family that delays in, you know, getting it, then they want that, you know, bus stop and so on, and it becomes very urgent for them, however, there's a lot of other things that occur, so there's just so many moving parts with transportation, uh, but the team has been working very well to get, uh, things in order, um, recognizing that this has done a tremendous job of, uh, leading the transportation department while we were in the, uh, transition phase, uh, we do have a new supervisor of transportation that started today, an experienced, uh, team member, so we're very excited, um, you know, to have, have her on board. Um, just wanted to recognize, I know you mentioned about the budget, we anticipate probably in the end of September before we actually know, um, what our numbers will be, uh, for this particular, uh, school year, so, um, also wanted to recognize the, uh, there's been a lot of publicity around a cellphone bill that didn't pass, um, ultimately, for us as a school district, we changed our policy, uh, last year, moving into this year, that cellphones and the nine-twelve have to be turned off and put away, and, uh, ultimately, that's what those bills are targeted to do, is to ensure that a school district has a policy, so whether a policy gets, you know, provided to us or not, it's not going to make a difference for what our practice is. Um, just wanted to recognize the enhancement mileage that NISD came forward and shared, uh, gave information about, their school board did, um, pass that, so there'll be some information, uh, coming forward, uh, real soon, uh, to try to get information out to our families. Um, just wanted to recognize, uh, Elizabeth and Isabella, they've just been, they did an amazing job of the focus at the end of the school year with all the celebrations and into the summer, um, it's just fantastic, and they've done a great job of getting the new, uh, you know, the, uh, school starting, uh, focus, I'm not sure if it's digitally available yet, but it will be really quick, and it will be in mailboxes, um, right away, too, so they've been working very hard on that, so thank you. Uh, Pine Ridge, uh, will be up and running, uh, will be, will be ready, as will the other schools, I know you can walk through there right now, it gets really uncomfortable, um, but they're used to, the, the crews are used to that, and, uh, they will have things ready. Uh, playgrounds across the district will look much different, um, all the kindergarten through fourth grade buildings, as well as the five, six buildings, um, having new playground equipment, uh, Northern Trail is the exception as far as completion by the start of the school year, um, that was, uh, known upfront. Uh, we had a couple of questions about the, um, start date of school, uh, that's something that's handled through negotiations and, um, you know, a number of different people weigh in on that, um, but we all, uh, don't have a calendar for the upcoming years, but we'll continue to, um, work with our groups to make sure that we have a calendar in place. Um, did want to recognize that we have a proc, we just, uh, were informed that we, uh, got an eight-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar grant through thirty-five-M, uh, which is, which will allow us to create our cut over from the units of study to our science of reading material, so we're really excited about that. Uh, thank you to, um, our business office as well as instruction office for their work on that, it'll make a huge difference, uh, for us to have that type of money to make those, uh, transitions. Um, this past week was a fantastic week, I'm very proud of our leadership team, we spent, uh, three hard days together, um, learning and growing, uh, about ourselves, about each other, um, about the work that we do across the district, and we just had fantastic, uh, three days, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, we did our leadership blueprint training, um, which was fantastic, and then, um, then Thursday, we had an informational meeting, uh, and then had some team building afterwards, and it was, uh, we're in a really, really great spot, and really looking forward to this, uh, school year. Um, as you all know, we've spent some time, um, listening, uh, to our employees, to our families, to our students, and some of the things that families will see that are different as we move into the school year, we have supervisors of student support systems, uh, or services, systems, and that is, that is K six, um, I didn't do that for this, but that's kind of how it works out, um, but we'll have those in all of our, uh, K six, uh, schools, so we're really looking forward to the supports, and we really heard from our staff that there was, um, you know, support needed, uh, for our students, and so, those are, those are in place, and, um, our, um, instruction and HR departments have worked hard to create modules to train those individuals, and they've got that training, they've been in, uh, like two weeks ago, they actually started in, and they have hit the ground running, and they're, are really making a difference. Uh, families will also see STEM pilot on the northern side, uh, due to some vacancies that have been, that, uh, were, uh, developed, uh, we decided to, uh, try out STEM, and so we'll see how that goes, we'll continue to give updates on that. You, you've heard a lot about junior kindergarten, and our youngest learners in the district were ecstatic to recognize, uh, as of, I think it was today, one hundred and fifty-four junior kindergarten students, um, and we also are, uh, excited to recognize that that has not impacted our kindergarten numbers in the negative at all. So, um, we're very excited about having those families, uh, join Forrest Hills Public Schools on their educational journey, um, much earlier than what they have been able to in the past. Uh, the district also will have a number of different, um, you know, safety, um, pieces that families will see, and I think the big piece is our, uh, staff just understanding what it is, uh, that's necessary to have, um, you know, safe school day and, and those types of things. We also added, uh, GSRP at Thorn Apple, Meadow Brook, and Orchard View, and those of you that are unfamiliar with that, that means, uh, four-year-old preschool, so there's three more classrooms that again will be bringing in four-year-olds, uh, we have had those programs at Ada and Collins, so we might have five of those programs, so again, bringing in, uh, more, uh, from our district. We also have added hand-to-hand partnerships, um, and that's at Meadow Brook, Collins, and Orchard View, and that is, uh, prime, the end result of that is, is making sure that, uh, those students that need meals on the weekend will have meals on the weekend, so we're really excited about that partnership, and that will be, uh, getting launched into the fall. Uh, we did have a great turnout for the Bus Driver Job Fair, and the purpose of that was to continue to, uh, strengthen the number of drivers we have, obviously that's the biggest piece of transportation is, is having enough people, but having, uh, great people, uh, to drive our, our students, and we, obviously, we're accepting applications all through the summer and getting them trained, somebody comes in and they have no training, they're really looking at four to eight weeks before they can actually get behind the wheel and drive students on their own, so we continue to, uh, work on that. Been working really hard on, um, the opening day event, uh, which will be next week, you've gotten information about that, um, we continue to fine-tune things, we're really excited about what that will look like, uh, Friday, we'll have our, um, our last meeting as a group to, to prepare, and then, uh, next week, we will have that event, and it should be fantastic and a great way to start a year. And that is all.
I'm tired.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm tired, and it's all.
Yeah.
We have, we have a great team that has made an awful lot happen, uh, for the school year, so.
Well, thank you very much, I know everybody's very excited, uh, well, maybe the kids aren't excited to jump back in, but, uh, uh, everybody else seems to be, uh, got a bit of excitement around it. Um, all right, at this time, our little public comment, so we're going to welcome members of the community to address the board, your colleagues come up to the microphone and state your name and your address, and we'll leave your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board, per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment, everyone who indicates they would like follow-up from the district will receive it from the appropriate administrator. Do we, do we need to talk about, do we need board communication? I skipped board communication. I'm so sorry. We're going to back one for communication, I apologize.
Julie, Tom was trying to give you a fist bump earlier, so you laughed.
I feel a little bad.
She made it right.
I was like, I didn't focus.
We all had a good laugh about it.
She's stuck in our transportation aura.
That was your board communication?
That was my board communication, and I was laughing about it over here. All right. Any other board communication issues? See, me, I had one, I know I can't remember what it would be, but there's a lot going on, it's a busy time of year, and, uh, just want to thank everybody, all of the staff and the administrators and teachers and everybody who's working really hard to get everything going, I mean, between all the construction projects and junior kindergartens and all of the different things that are going on, it really does take a huge team, so thank you for, everybody for your efforts, it's definitely does not go unnoticed. Okay, now, rewind, I said all this stuff about public comments, so we'll just move in, because I, I'll use this hand when we know cards here, so, uh, first up, we have Tina Pritchard.
Good evening, my name is Tina Pritchard, and, uh, due to why I'm up here, I prefer not to give my address, if that's, thank you. Um, my husband Brett is seeing you with me here, as well. Um, I am the mother of the victim, uh, of student A, for whom you recently voted a conditional reinstatement. The separation of our son from his attacker is absolutely vital to his physical, mental, and emotional well-being. We are deeply grateful for the committee's thoughtful recommendation, the district's responsive action, and each of your votes in support of the decision to keep student A out of the attendance event in which the crime was committed, and away from our son. Your willingness to prioritize the safety and well-being of our son has provided us with a sense of relief we have not felt in months. As you know, how my victim impacted, the past nine months have been extraordinarily difficult for our family. Our son continues to live with the trauma of this incident, and we have been in survival mode, trying to navigate daily life while supporting him through this ongoing crisis. Your decision offers us the hope of a new chapter, one with less fear, a path toward healing, and the ability for our son to once again focus on school, friendships, and his future. We sincerely thank you for standing with us in such a meaningful way.
Thank you very much. Ms. Monarch?
Ms. Monarch, you'll find me at sixty-eight-sixty Cascade Road. My speech reflects my views and no affiliated organization. I'm disappointed that the board book changes were approved by you today in their present form. While most of the changes are reasonable, you have accepted a change that puts barriers between the families and the school and reduce transparency. Policy five-four-zero-seven-B-three, now called policy five-four-zero-seven-two, was part of the policy for complaints about instructional materials. Prior to the vote, it stated paraphrased, Level Three, Reconsideration Committee. The Assistant Superintendent for Instruction will convene a committee to review the appeal. The reconsideration committee will review the parent's written objection and forward their recommendation to the Board of Education Curriculum Committee at their next regularly scheduled meeting. The Board of Education authorizes the Board Curriculum Committee to review the documents and make a decision on the request, the decision of the Board Curriculum Committee is final. It is now paraphrased, Level Three, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. The Assistant Superintendent for Instruction will review the parent's written objection and will issue written recommendation. The Assistant Superintendent of Instruction's decision is final. The board is a representative of we, the people, we elected you. We expect you to approve new curriculum, but also to actively monitor the curriculum and help parents protect their children from any unintended erosion of their family values. We trust you to help us, because your seat on the board is contingent on our perception of you as our representative through popular election. Scott Hay is an appointee of the administration, and not even Ben Kirby's administration, but Dan Beam's administration. By making this change, you have given repeal power to un-elect a bureaucrat who is not directly accountable to the parents. He has no incentive to favor the values of families, his job is not contingent on the community virtues being upheld, but rather on the reputation of the school system. This in conflict with religious, cultural, and other values held by individual parents and families. There is still time to repeal five four zero seven B and return it to the twenty-four twenty-five version. Doing so maintains the board's authority to assess current curriculum on a case-by-case basis. And unlike the administration, you are incentivized through popular election to consider our viewpoints and values. If you repeal the change and maintain your authority, you provide a check and balance to the administration and serve as a voice of empowerment for all parents. Repeal five four zero seven B, restore the twenty-two twenty-four version for the good of the community. Good day.
Thank you, Dr. Monarch.
My name's Mick Perle, I live on Forest Lake Drive. For the benefit of those board members who played hooky from the last meeting, here's a replay of points made in June. We thanked the board for the May meeting, when your majority confirmed entrenched woke attitudes which should concern many more parents. Our schools definitely have many fans. They know about bright and shiny programs worthy of praise, but do not know what they do not know. Most are too busy and complacent to research what truly has been happening in our schools and why government-sponsored education has been devolving, declining over the last five decades. The board's majority refused to look at a picture book with provocative pictures and a woke agenda targeting our very youngest kids. Refused to question curriculum and books grounded in CRT, rebranded as DEI. Refused to rubber stamp anything. And refused to acknowledge fundamental problems throughout public education. And why? As with many parents, the majority of the board has been too complacent to question much of anything. A root cause of such complacency and votes is groupthink faith in expert opinions. Such experts who shut down schools during COVID because young, healthy kids were so vulnerable, insisted cloth masks worked and got to be six feet apart. Vaccines prevent infection and spread, and on and on and provably wrong. Or the experts mandating DEI everywhere, programs now proving to be counter-effective to their goals causing division, envy, and injury. Or experts who began trashing phonics in the nineteen eighties, the decade when our public schools began failing, falling from the tip-top of worldwide standings, now way down to around thirty-fifth while being number one in how much we spend per pupil. Or experts in the eighties who began injecting anti-academic critical pedagogy into teachers' college texts, which led to critical race theory now called DEI. What's wrong with this picture? As a student history and an intern panicked parent of grade school children, I know a lot has gone wrong with our schools. We all know the adage, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. But to those in positions of power and influence, I dare say, if you are not a part of the solution, you are the problem. Please go beyond your echo chambers and educate yourselves, become your own experts. The truth is out there and right here.
Chair Chakovski.
Chair Chakovski in the White House on White Hills. I have a follow-up comment regarding faith in expert opinions. There's a well-established hierarchy, a six-level pyramid of evidence credibility. At the lowest level of credibility are tada, expert opinions. At the very bottom, because they are often rife with bias, especially in the sphere of education. But to my main points, in May, the board's majority expressed total support and faith in teacher discretion and independence when it comes to curricula, books, everything. So here, yet again, re-re-reiterated are a few examples of teacher discretion, independence, and judgment. In my neighborhood, there are mixed-race kids in Northern Middle. Those of darker color taunt their white parents and grandparents, calling them racist, racist. When asked where did they get this hateful idea, they said, from our teachers at school. Raise your hand if you support such teacher independence and discretion. Thank you for your answer. It's the same as mine. Or white kids labeled as oppressors and those of color as the oppressed. This racist nonsense has been taught by teachers in this district. Again, raise your hand if you support such teacher discretion. Thank you for your answer, the same as mine. And some time ago, but not forgotten, the impressionable, insecure, mid-teen girls who were lured into a dress-in-black Goth lesbian cupboard. They were told, your parents don't understand you, but we do. Your parents don't love you, but we do. Loving family relationships were harmed so destroyed by this influence. The mentor of this group was a teacher in Central. The promotion of the LGQVT agenda here and now must be the fulfillment of that teacher's dream, who is still here influencing students. Yet again, raise your hand if you support such teacher independence and if the board is okay with publicly identifying these teachers here for the record. I'll take that answer under advisement. Bottom lines, the board's majority has unquestioning faith in the biased opinions of experts of choice and complete confidence in the independence of all our teachers. While we have reasonable reasons to be much more concerned and questioning of curriculum, books, experts, and so educators. The ever-increasing flow of students away from Forest Hills Public Schools and to private schools says we are not alone. Think about it. Yes, the truth is out there and right here. Thank you.
Melissa Yeomans.
Hi, my name is Melissa Yeomans and I live on Kirk Drive here. I'm a parent of two Forest Hills public school students at the time. So I'm just returning and while we've had some colorful and passionate messages tonight, I don't know if you remember that I came and spoke a little bit at a previous meeting. And reluctantly, I haven't had the letter that I'm preparing for you all written and sent yet. It's a pretty lengthy letter with a lot of topics and involving just the Mamu versus Taylor, the potentials of act-outs, the experience with book clubs and different situations of Forest Hills Public Schools. So I don't have too much of a big message tonight, other than that, I really am committed to sending that communication. I appreciate the work that you all do and your consideration of parents and all of the values that exist within this district. And I look forward to seeing how we can work together and how we can protect all the students and continue to just move in a positive direction with communication. I'd have to vote, yeah. Please be expecting that coming up in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Yeomans. And Adrianne Urban.
Good evening, Adrianne Urban, Green Drive, Rockville. Just a really brief message as well. I heard back from Mrs. Felsen about my questions from a couple meetings ago, maybe the last one, about the vote being changed. I know we talked about this before, I've mentioned it's been discussed from people in the audience, about moving the public comments to the end of votes. Just want to bring it up again, the response I got, sorry I didn't respond to you yet. I'm still concerned about it. I appreciate your viewpoint stating that the purpose of this meeting tonight is for the Board of Education needs is to get business done. And I understand that and I agree with that. But I would counter that it actually is to hear from the constituents, because if you've got the chronic period at the end, then obviously you want to hear from us, I guess. Moving it to the beginning only changes the timeframe. It doesn't change your job, it doesn't change what you get done, it just changes the order of events. So I still think that moving it to the beginning would be best, because if you really want to hear from us, the best way to hear is all of us to be able to speak to a volume of people instead of, as you recommended, which again, I respect your opinion, sending an email to one person or going to a curriculum meeting or a committee meeting as you suggested, which is often, always during the day, which is very difficult. We all know society the way it is right now, most parents are working, often both. It's very difficult. I assume that you all get time off of your jobs to be able to come here, or you're self-employed and you can let yourself off, but a lot of us are in that position. I am, it's still tough for me. The second thing I wanted to ask about, and I know you can't answer me right now, is cell phone policy. So I am concerned, I like, I heard about the vote, but I've heard a few whispers and some shouting about some very disconcerting things going on with cell phones. On the one hand, I think it's important to have the safety arm to be able to call your parents or somebody else you need to immediately. I assume we all have, there's some safety measures in place for students not having access to their phones and still being able to reach out, do what they need to do if there is an emergency. But I've heard, gotten wind of, not just locally, other schools, but locally, some really disconcerting things going on with cell phone usage, even in classrooms, even to the extent of porn being watched on cell phones in classrooms, visible to other students. Sure, they can go on their cell phone at home, but I don't think students should be exposed to that in the classroom, or the cafeteria, or anywhere. Inappropriate, destructive, highly destructive. I'm sure you all are aware of the studies of what porn does to students, to anyone's mind. The entrapment that's involved, the regret later. How about these serial killers who say later, I wish my parents had stopped me, I wish someone had stopped me, this is where it led me, I'm now on death row. So I hope they'll consider that in the future and try to figure out what's the balance here and what do we do? And I'd love to know what the policy is, so someone could reach out to me about that. I think everyone would like to know, what is the policy if there is a student caught doing something like that or something else heinous, descriptive killings, school shooting instructions? What is the policy? How do we handle that? How do we, and not just discipline, but how do we raise these kids to make their choices? Thank you.
Paul DeWale.
Good evening. Hopefully, my questions are going to be far more simple than some of those that preceded me. I've been a bus driver here in Forest Hills for a little over four years. I drove not because I needed to work, but because I wanted to make a difference. Last I knew, we had thirty-one drivers, where forty-two drivers are needed this year. Forty-one routes plus one full-time stand-by. I am interested to hear what the district's plan is for dealing with this driver shortage. And Superintendent Kirby, as you said, it takes five, six, sometimes longer weeks to get a brand-new driver fully trained and prepared to drive and drive safely. And so we're looking at October, maybe November, where these new uncredentialed candidates might be able to help address the shortage. So I'm concerned that the families in the district are not completely informed as to what the status is and how it may impact them to allow them to make changes or accommodations. Four years ago when I started, I had meetings with my families and the messages I heard about what happens when they can't get their kids to school through bus driving is pretty significant. So my request is to know what the district's plan is and should there not be a solution that is being inferred, what the district's going to do to create a solution. And when that time comes, I will be happy to contribute what I've observed, learned, and believe after more than four years of driving through the district. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input and the appropriate district representative will get back with anyone who requested it. Is there any other business before the board this evening? There is none, meeting is adjourned.